I'll be just over here to get out of here.
I don't think you're going for it.
I'll wait.
Come on, Jerry.
How did that bite?
I came in yesterday.
What did you say, man?
Um.
You all right?
Um, David, I heard a call down at the county administration yesterday and Mike, why can't you take those?
Yeah, I was here.
I'm gonna tell them, uh, what's the one? We got seven hundred people coming through now, give them a pound of our ice age, but it's kind of confusing that. He's just helping out me, not you.
Where your mask, Jack? Jack, sir. Rick, where's it? Where your mask?
Ricky.
That oughta do ya a lot of good. It looks good anyway, there you go. You look like the mask ran. Yeah, yeah, you're doing. You can't see him.
Yeah, my, as far as I know, I'm an actually, you know, we haven't been able to.
Really?
Why? Because our workers are in a room. And we missed out. We'll see how we can do it.
What if we don't? What if we don't?
What? Yeah, you're stuck, you're stuck.
Thank you everybody, yes, we. Oh gracious, the Father's come before us this morning, and Trump, we know how, thank you for your grace and your mercy, thank you for allowing us to be here. We realize it's not our being that we're here, but it's the cause of you, you know, allowing us to live. To be here, to do your work. And we ask that you give us the eyes to see, give us the ears to hear, and to understand and to comprehend anything that you have us to do. But we'd be so careful in mind, particularly giving your name to praise, our glory, our honor belong to you, in the Son of Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Say it again. Well, it leads to the flag, and then you say something better. And you are God, who would you stand, one nation, under God, in the good, in the good judgment of God. Uh-huh. Okay. Okay, come on, let me, let, let this start. Okay, heavens, Mo, he's on his way. And that's it, I like it, that's it. Boy, we can prove this again, that he was.
How much more can you prove?
We've moved it from seven to seven, all of the things that I.
Alright.
Yeah, this is just the one. Uh, but, but on the side. To discuss our county employees. We might have made some mistakes, I don't really, we might have handled things. But, going forward, we need to make sure that we understand that, that county employees, you know, the first line of defense. And we need to make progress, and to make sure that we keep this county open at all time, you know, we don't need to shut the county down. We could need to come up with some kind of arrangement that we can keep moving forward, because if we, if we continue and shut it down, we don't get the truck. We need to make sure that we make some progress, that we can keep the county open. This is our first line of defense, we can't shut it down. We gotta keep it open.
God, you made a question, Mike, I wanna, I understand where you're going, and I think we gonna have to make some decisions today as to what we do from here on.
Right.
My question, and I guess it's to Fred and Randy, so Fred's here. My question to Fred, and I guess to Jerry, is who made the decision to shut the unit system completely down? I mean, I understand, you had a person, and look, God rest his soul, I, you know, I understand the situation, and he was in contact with some of the people. But who made the decision to shut the whole unit system down at your month?
It was my decision, the psychology decision, the decision on Jerry's, you know, we had twenty-one employees at the uniform, they said they had contact with the.
Okay.
Those employees are on the knees on the thirteen, return to work Monday. Okay, that's, that's the decision that, that's the decision we made.
Right, that was the thirteen employees, without all employees in the unit system, or part of the employees?
There was only twenty-one employees.
Okay, of the forty, how many employees?
Yes.
I said, all of them, somebody made the decision to shut it down.
It wasn't you, it wasn't you.
The memory is full, and you have to clean out your.
When you said unit system, the unit system, you, you built on, on, on the, on the, on the, on the. But what I want y'all to understand, it was never closed completely down. I ought to, even though when they, the, the decision was finally made, I said, y'all, that, that roll firm and the sister gonna be on call twenty-four hours. We still on call to do whatever come up. And we, I, I mean, we do everything we can do to make the work of God be right. It look like it don't run out like that all the time.
Uh, Jack, I, I want everybody to understand, I think this boy gave the emergency management director. His daughter to do what he needed to do in conjunction with the county administrator, and talk to go to vote. My question is, just what I just asked. We went from Monday, we, somebody made the decision to shut the whole thing down. Because, I mean, our workers didn't work, did it? District one workers didn't work, did it?
Some of them, uh, some of them come in, but we had, uh, one down, might have been Monday. Matter of fact.
Wait, wait, I'm talking about last week, it's before Monday. But when we shut the thing down, district one workers did not work on graders, on mowers, on nothing, right? Routine maintenance was like.
No, no, not, no.
Which, you know, I understand a person can come from his house, get an embrace.
Wait, wait, now, wait, you're taking me too fast. Monday and Tuesday, they worked.
Of last week.
Of last week, there were Wednesday we had to meet.
That's what I'm saying, Wednesday, they were let off until Monday of this week.
That's right.
Okay. Then, they were let off, somebody made a decision. Was it you, Fred, made the decision to let them off from Mon- Monday to Wednesday?
Okay.
Did you make that decision, Jerry?
Nah, I didn't.
Who made the decision?
I don't.
You didn't make the decision?
Oh, no, I don't look at it.
You made the decision?
I don't think I did.
But he said, he said, close down.
You didn't make any mistake? I didn't make it.
When, when it was closed down, we weren't closed down Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, last week, no, this week. This week is that too.
I understand, but, I understand why we closed down to Wednesday.
Yeah.
And what I'm trying to find out, who made that down? Who brought you, basically? I know I didn't make it.
You didn't make it, you didn't make it. And none of the board made it, well, Sheriff, I don't even mind asking you. But that's my question, who made the decision? Sheriff, you gotta know who made the decision.
I paid the decision, no, but I didn't make the decision.
Well, who made the decision?
The board, so, they made it.
What's wrong with it? I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
You already have, but I got a phone call from Mr. Moore.
Okay, well, it's the statement, stating, stating that the board, they had been met with the board.
And the board agreed upon that, talking to Mr. Gary and Mr. Rama, and agreed on still, there are some people out there, the problem is, some people waited to the last minute, went and had their tests. And they haven't got their test results back. And I think that's what everything that I know in there is.
Sheriff, I understand. You can, okay.
Mr. Moore told you, that you need to shut it down till Wednesday? Nah, he, he said, it's contingent, I, I, he said, I gotta understand, y'all gonna come back to work Monday. Uh, we got some workers that went and had their test, and they gonna have their results back before Wednesday. And, but, but, what was the one that contacted you? Yeah, he was the one that contacted me.
And Mr. Moore contacted you?
Yes, he called me, uh, and he was saying that it might need to be extended to Tuesday. But, but of course, I mean, I told him, you know, you need to give Mr. Collins, somebody, I didn't have a problem with giving Mr. Collins and, and the county administrator, and, and Fred on, on, on that. That was on contact I had with.
But that's what I'm asking you, where I'm going, and I'm not gonna ask individuals, because I have not got a call from Mr. Moore, or nobody other than Mr. Smith. And I understand when you called me, you told me about closing the two Monday.
Yeah.
I understand that. But after that, I have not got the count. I don't believe our board made a decision to shut it down. Am I correct, Mr. Collins?
You, you are correct, but I, I think what probably would have happened, and I, I'm not sure if I can, I'll tell you what happened, but I'll, I'll tell you about your work. When I looked at it, would have come back home, right? But I, I think what happened, the problem's, I'm glad, that they made a mistake, or somebody entered or somebody wrong. And this is where we at. But, uh, I, I don't think about hoping it hard, you know, gives anywhere, I think what we need to do is make sure that this doesn't happen again. And I think we, we fall on that. But I don't think hoping this is gonna, gonna solve it, I mean, somebody said there was a mistake, or somebody got the wrong understanding. But I don't know where it fell down, everybody fell out somewhere.
Definitely, because the county administrator is totally left out of the loop. And that is not supposed to happen. That's who you ought to be hearing from. You ought to be hearing from the county administrator. And the board president, who's gonna tell you what the board do, not me, I can't, I shouldn't be calling you and saying, Jerry, in the future. I should, you shouldn't listen to me saying you go and shut the unit system down. That ought to be a board order.
But I'm, I guess, oh, yes, I guess we done grow too close to be a family, 'cause I respect y'all's position. Now, if one of y'all supervisors called me to tell me that, I don't know, I don't know, contact all the other supervisors, that, that what we, I'm not gonna go behind his back to call, you know. Uh, I don't think if I, if y'all tell me to do it, then I will.
Yeah, I'm telling you, you need to do it.
Cause I'm gonna call.
If I'm not gonna get. Well, if, if, if I don't feel comfortable with the situation, I would do it, 'cause I wouldn't, that'd be, I made a decision that you could roll firm and the sister on call, on hand, in case we had an emergency. We would never close completely down, full of our concern. We don't never close.
Okay. You made a decision, but here's my problem on that. Yeah, y'all drove down to Jackson yesterday in trucks. Men supposed to be in isolation, y'all drove down in trucks that they should have brought to us anyway. But we did it when we supposed to be at home, staying safe away from each other. Now, that don't even make a lot of sense, that night, so, that's what I'm trying to tell you, is there's a procedure that needs to be followed, and we're missing.
Mr. Smith, I say, I'm, I'm speaking now, as the county administrator, now as a clerk. Uh, Mr. Smith talked to me on Friday. We got that city paperwork that was presented, uh, to us from the power meeting, as a result of the board giving us permission to cut a check for six hundred and ten thousand five hundred dollars. The informant let me know that there was an insert that was needed based on the equipment, based on the number of vehicles that would you go to Jackson and pick up, uh, truck, truck work, can work. And so, uh, he spoke to me, y'all, the person clerk, sign up on that city paperwork, we talked to the gentleman that, uh, we talked to, that presented to the board, based on the paperwork. We, we signed every page, we, we required to do every document, even the power turn out all pieces of titles and necessary signing. Uh, Mr. Smith begged me. And I told him that it was green light, that he could go on Monday. So if you wanna ship something, like, he didn't act alone. I had knowledge that he was going to get the truck, but the chief was that we would, we did not want to cut a check for six hundred and ten thousand five hundred dollars. Wait the order said, it had to be delivered. And we made sure that insurance was in place, from Jackson, to make sure we had a cover. So it came back on, kind of, and went upon its arrival, he sent me the picture. We talked to this, uh, Ben Quon this morning, about getting that city paperwork in, the gentleman here on this morning, nine thirty, he said he'd be by nine thirty, so he may hit very tight, he said he would be here. So we're waiting now, to receive that city paperwork and the last invoice, so we can cut that check. We didn't want it to be, that we cut that check prior to, uh, this meeting, or even prior to the date that we received, uh, that equipment. So, we talked about the precaution as it relates to masks and gloves, and he's already been in place to check the temperature on each one employee, but it was an insert. It was not a on-site insert, this insert was down there at Bridge Lake. And so he spoke to me on Friday about this, so, you know, I was not out of the loop on what he was doing. But he also said that the last other week, before we was there, on Wednesday, that we were speaking to the ones that was there. But he popped and said that there will be others that will call from the unit system after they find out. And then we left that responsibility to him to make the decision on what he needed to do. As it relate to conveying the message, not extension, but after the time, we experienced a death. The time we had to meet, we had an employee, there was a lot, on exposure. Three hours later, he was gone.
I understand that, huh?
So that extension. As relation to those two additional days.
You mean from Monday to Wednesday?
Those, I'm just saying, we were dealing with exposure before then. Only thing we been dealing with prior to, being Mr. Randall, uh, with the contractor, with the board, the order they given us to do, had to work together based on exposure piece alone. Quarantine precautionary measures of exposure. As a kind of, we, we've not experienced a death. But the death occurred, and that is the way out. So, we, we realized that he's hit on there, and there's nothing really that we can do now, but we can do something going forward. So if we, there's one, there's one minute, Mr. Ray. God forbid, we have another casualty, lose another one, then maybe we can have something that plays going forward. Now, I don't know nothing else.
I think we got two places we need to do, and I wanna make sure our board feels the same way. Fred Randall was giving me a thought.
Yes, sir.
To do what he spoke to this, in conjunction with you and the board.
Yes, sir.
And that's who needs to make the call, he's got, he, he's got the ears of the health department, Zima, all of the, the, the people. Who can advise him the best action to take. And he needs to bring that to you, and he needs to come to this board. No one board member, uh, two board members, or three ought to make a decision. Now, I don't know who made the decision, I guess we, we do know who made the decision. Uh, Mr. Smith.
But I don't, I don't know.
Well, I think Mr. Moore made that.
I'm, I'm just diverting to you about the transportation piece, I know, I know about the, the vehicles, you know, and the mask, but we talked about the conference piece with that. I was only, I was only addressing that part. But I do realize, and I do understand, that after we had the meeting, we experienced a death. And before now, we've not had any, uh, other case like this at all.
Okay, so if you want, but, let's get into this, sir, you ain't got anything to add down? You made a decision with Mr. Smith, that Smith send the employees in a truck down to Jackson.
He briefed me, he let me know, uh, it's gone.
And you, and you approved it?
In other word, when I signed up on that, that city paperwork, I was not out of the loop, you, you.
You approved it.
You spoke about it, and you said that I was supposed to be communicating, and he did communicate that with me.
You approved it.
You wanna say yes, I approve, I would say yes, I approve.
We talked to anybody, any board members about it?
He already said a woman worked there, they had an insert, he just only briefed me. He only briefed me on what, and I.
I mean, you let, how, any board members about it?
Okay, Mr. Ray, he just spoke that, uh, as the county administrator, I could make a decision.
I got you.
I didn't do the extension thing, I made a decision for him to go down there and take the trip, to pick those trucks up, so we can follow the board order, to make sure the check was cut for six hundred and ten five hundred thousand dollars.
I got you, I, if you made the decision, did you talk to him, or did you?
If you want, if you want me to say I made the decision, I talked to him, he said he was going, I had knowledge that he was going. I didn't realize what the decision had been made, but he did not, he did not go without me not knowing.
I don't have a decision, oh, now, I wonder, I wonder, did you, uh, did you talk to the board president, did you ask him what to?
The board president, that's what I know, we had already communicated, I did not call Mr. Collins to give a green light to go. We was already communication, everybody was already communication, I'm quite sure, just like this board gave the last part, the board did. The board gave the last part, from Mr. Smith, to get those trucks. They had those trucks, the truck was to be delivered here.
That's right.
We had an obligation financially as well, to make sure those trucks arrive in Leaf Floor County safely. There was an insert that had to be, and it was, we, we got the truck work guy, and I was gonna speak about that insert, and he spoke to me about it. And I signed up on all of that city paperwork, so Monday morning, he can go down there, so I had the general knowledge, and I knew that he was going to Jackson on Monday morning.
So, you realize the trucks was up there delivered either?
I was not, I was not under the pressure that the truck would be delivered here, I was only under the knowledge that the truck had to be inserted before he brought the trucks here.
Man, you got to go without, we went down there for a class. I told y'all, I asked the board, did that mean, did that mean we had? I said, they gonna give a class, or they got these new vehicle. That they gonna take, and I would like, and give it all the ground, and make sure they are seeing that class. So that they have no hazard, we got different trucks on what we normally have, just like we did the front end load. Just like we did everything else, we ain't doing nothing nothi-
They didn't deliver the front end load, did you?
They delivered the front end load, but what I'm saying, they kinda did, and went over, so all the workers be familiar with how to operate.
I understand that.
Yeah, that's how it works.
Would normally be delivered here. I don't know, we gotta pick up the truck, and know that it's, it's a class.
We went to, we went down and picked up five or six pickup, we, we in ambulances, I'm with, you remember that ride?
I drove one.
Thank you.
All right, fine, that does, I always tell y'all, we get the board in the future, the county, and the rest of the board members. I think that we need to make a decision as a board, that the procedure would be, you would do what you got to, I mean, during the quarantine, and these people leave to be at home. The fact that you're going to extend it to Wednesday, for safety purposes.
I didn't extend it to Wednesday.
I understand, but it would be extended to Wednesday, that you shouldn't be doing.
We, we, we.
That's good, we just need to move forward.
Look, we, we made a mistake, we made a mistake when we really put the whole thing over pretty and hang, and we acted on closing the unit system. I go back to saying the same thing. We can't close the unit system.
Think, when we put these people on quarantine, we sent them home, pack them around, and they came. They, they what, they, they, you don't send people home, 'cause you think they gonna catch up. You sent them home and get them out to the public, for, for, getting to somebody else. That's what, that's what quarantine is about. Quarantine is not about protecting these, that, that, or that we all, that was, you, you all, they got it, they got it, you know? So, we sent them home to get them out to public, give them to public, didn't nobody get it to them, public? Some of them still went on to another job, and we do it.
I'm, I, I know.
So, 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 somebody dropped the ball, while we dropped, eighty-four times, board supervisors have dropped the ball, eighty-four times, they done did it all over the world, president has dropped the ball, congressman has dropped the ball. We need to figure out where we're going forward, not to, not to blame on this one, but to blame on that. Let's move forward, as soon as we can say, to the program we had, again.
Mr. President, please say something.
Go ahead.
As far as, um, I think as far as the board, what we need to do, we have several to what you said, we need to speak on the procedure. We don't need to point blame at Mr. Jerry, Mr. uh, Jerry, because I can understand where he's coming from, but supervisors are coming to him and say something. It seems to him as if he's backtracking to go past the county administrator. So what we as a board need to do, supervisors need to come together, and we need to have a procedure in place, so that we can deliver a message to Mr. Jerry. And therefore, he don't have to feel that he's under some pressure, that he's backblinding somebody, because that's a lot of blame that we're trying to put on him.
So you understand, I understand, you have a right, but even if I'm talking, you got a problem, you know, this, I mean, you give it to the road, now, you didn't talk to the road. But when, what you do affects everything, the whole county. Then it needs to be brought to the board super.
I told him to.
And that's where we at. But you gotta have one person that makes a decision, and that's why Fred was put there. Because he had that thought, you know, he, he was in the day-to-day operations of what was going on. And I think to move forward, we still need to keep Fred as a contact person, to contact the county administrator and the board. That's how I see it. I mean, you don't need the board members doing it, all of it. We need a man who is dealing with the health department and all that, he, he's the logical one to make those decisions. But I think he's gonna have to work through the county administrator. And the board, when we make a decision to shut down something, and I think we have our special meeting, we need to have a special meeting. No one or two members of ours do it. That's my opinion on that, now. I think it stops all this kind of miscommunication. And I'm not getting on Jerry, and I mean, you might see me getting on him, but I'm not. The procedures are, are there when you do something. Let's say one of those men had been exposed to somebody with coronavirus, and we put them in the trucks, and they went down there, and two or three people got in there and know, and died. That decision messed up everything. It messed up what we were trying to stop in the first place. So, it's all, it's about safety, I mean, now, in this time that we in, a bad decision can get somebody killed. And we don't need that. And if it is, it needs to be the five supervisors making that decision. So, but like I'm saying, I don't say, I'm, I'm gonna call Jerry, just like I always call Jerry. Well, I'll be dealing with, you know, things, and deal with one thing, I'm gonna have one thing, one problem. But I think the board needs to reiterate how the procedure's gonna work. And how this board does it, that that needs to work.
You go ahead and talk about the problems.
Well, let, let's get on the procedure, that's how we are, and, and move forward.
I'm just making sure that it's, uh, problem, freedom coming to you all back there. And Sheriff has a suppose, and Sheriff's part, we can't ship Sheriff's part, and. That's what I'm saying, county, county, what you did, I know too, but we, we allow one. We have it back, no matter how bad, if the county board is looking, but that we can install that, and make things, that's just how it was. When we took these y'all, we knew these y'all were dangerous. So, we can't ship the thing down, we gotta kind of figure it out, how are we gonna go about handling it, rather than ship it down, we can't ship it down.
I totally agree with you, that's what I'm trying to say, we need to, we need to come up with a procedure, I thought we had a procedure, I'd like to proceed to some.
Well, we will, we, we, we will, we did.
Not out of the zone, now.
Well, we're not ready to go, like I said, we shouldn't have shut the unit system down. We could just, it was a decision that we made, because of, it was made on a basis that we thought was fair, for the county. But we shouldn't, we shouldn't have. We shouldn't ship it down. You want to say that?
Yes, we started out with this, with twenty-one employees who said they had exposure to this employee. We started out with twenty-one, we had everybody sign this on Wednesday. That's what we made the decision on, those twenty-one employees. They come back, the employee had been gone from the unit over eight days prior to him going there. Not possible. We backed those days up, when the employee hadn't been exposed to this person since then, and days, has come up, this employee now, on the sixth, has been back to the unit. We added those days, until the three days that was left, which, Wednesdays, Fridays, we got Saturday, Sunday, that's another five days. Two to fourteen days, if you posit that the period, you warranted. Monday would have been that period. They was already there, already been working showing those signs. That's why we said Monday. All right. It was only twenty-one that go.
It was only twenty-one employees, we sat there to come back work Monday morning, at that regular time, that's when we left off. Even though we had employer dead, uh, had called, some employers called the supervisor and said, he had just went to the hospital to choose the wish. The days that they last had contact this employer, the last day they had contact counts as quarantine. They've been coming to work, they've been going, even though he passed on this day, you still have been passed that employer on quarantine, you've been coming to work day to day. How'd you find out that he's positive that he's, he died, then we wanna start over? You don't work that way, the advisor, you have county insurance, and you feel that you need to be tested, you can, go to your primary physician. Go get tested, write a doctor's excuse by the thing, you need to be quarantined for seven days, or you did. Most employers who did that, they tell the doctors the last day they had contact with the person. Right now, I mean, there's this one, a few of them that went took the test, don't have a doctor's excuse. Some of them just went Friday, they left Wednesday, and went Friday, so three to five days they had to test. So I don't think the process that we have in place is working, but a lot of them want the days extended. And it did follow the challenges, we give the days extended from Monday to Wednesday. So when we left the, uh, county bond, we must have called Mr. Jerry, Mr. Jerry agreed, everybody come to work on Monday, all employers agreed with that. We had all them sign who was there, but we didn't with only twenty-one employers. So, that's, that's what we were, so I think the process, where I think the breakdown is extended from Monday to Wednesday. I think the process still working that we have in place. When I came back out of this warranty issue, what Jerry had, we got each bond issued supplies, they got their own supplies. So when we come back yesterday, then when I found out it was extended to Wednesday, I called Mr. Jerry, I didn't know about it, he didn't know about it. So, that's the only breakdown that I, that I seen, was the extension, the rest of the process working like it's folded. I think that's the only problem we had, the extension from Monday to Wednesday, however that happened. And the communication wasn't possible. I think the process, which I'm in place, is working, has been working, that's the only thing we have to issue now to Monday at least. The process we have in place has been working fine. I think we all understand, five board members, not one or not two, I think we need to try to work the process. I mean, you know, everybody needs to understand that all five board members represent the county. But the extension, I don't hear one word of that extension. So, I know I said was a failure there. So, I think we're all in the future, remember there's five board members, not one, and not two, and not three, five of them. Three people can vote however they wanna vote, but everybody needs to be aware of what's going on, but I don't mean here, I'm straight. I think it's real simple, Mr. Collins, and that's the board members, if we just move forward like we going, with Fred being under a bar, whatever the decision comes to him, or.
I, I, I agree with you one hundred percent, but I go back to saying, if you posit that we got to set for the county. Quarantined, we can't, we can't get there. I agree with you, I mean, you can think, somebody might come back tomorrow, and we can go right back to anything another cell day, we can't get there.
I think the board was disgusted at when we had a board meeting, I think we'd have come to that same conclusion we did today. A man can leave his house, get in a motor grave, and go bring him to go back home, and he won't see anybody, he bothers me.
I agree with that.
So I think, especially if you want, I don't think any of them were exposed. So, I mean, the roads are deteriorating, the grass is still growing, we need to do what we gotta do, that needs to be a decision, the board kind of thing. Not a department, they have a lot, to bring the vehicle, let's stake up Jerry's head, Jerry did call me about that. And the Monday, I understood, I went along with it, I figured everybody knew about it. But the Monday to Wednesday, I didn't know a thing about it, so anyway, that's old view. New years, and if the five board members control the county, and they are being structured.
I didn't own the car, you saying, I called all the supervisors that were in there, I said, everybody know, cause I didn't feel comfortable, but I respect the decision. I called not only you, I called all the supervisors.
And I agree, I understand that, but like I said, the Wednesday, it was in question too.
Yeah, the procedure that Mr. Rantle just told, I agree, that it's a good procedure, and it worked. And I think what it is, is that some, when he said that some of the employees was trying to, went probably when they got tested late, it could be that they're trying to circle them, thinking they're gonna get some extended time. Now, as far as Monday, Jerry did contact me, I had no knowledge of Monday to Wednesday myself, but, um, Jerry did contact me, as far as telling me that they're gonna shut the bond down until Monday. So I was, I was not real about that, but the extended, Jerry had.
Those two days was really, cause we didn't know, I didn't know that at all. Anyway, like I said, is everybody satisfied with the procedure in the board? Moving forward.
When we talking about procedures, we're talking about the quarantine procedure at the county unit.
That's correct. Well, well, decisions made by the board instead of an individual. Nowhere, if one board member can't make a decision.
I don't think that any point in time during this, one board member made a decision. Uh, great, my understanding, uh, county administrator, uh, the role of DA going for the county, uh, the road manager. Uh, were, you know, got out in front of this thing, because they had to react, we're dealing with an emergency, a campaign. And so, safety before our employees come first. And, uh, Mr. Collins, I think shutting it down wasn't the right thing. And, uh, the employees that when they got tested, they don't need to come back until they get their results. So we need to find out who got tested, when, and when, and when they get their results, and then they come back.
Fred, did you tell the, the road manager then, that told all?
Yeah, did you tell the road manager all of the Wednesday?
Did I tell him?
No.
What, 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 what did?
Me having the conversation, I'm not talking, we're not talking about.
We trying to find out who told them from Monday to Wednesday, did I come back to Wednesday? So you didn't tell the road manager to that? You didn't tell them to extend it to Wednesday?
No, I can't tell them to extend it to Wednesday.
Let's just speak from here out, and not try to point to what we doing. Same as you, now we leaning back to top.
Yeah, that's true, that's blue ball, I, everybody know we're at, so that's blue ball. If you don't mind, I'm satisfied with the thing we got in place, far as the board.
And I'll leave you, but I do wanna reiterate the idea that, uh, all employees need to have their temperature check, for one or, for the owner's daily basis. Uh, come with Mr. Gibson, Jimmy, and he showed me a law where all of his employees can get their temperature checked on a daily basis. So, you know, not only just he at the courthouse, but at the sheriff's office, everywhere.
And I agree with you, I'll be that close to that, I think everybody told.
Everybody has that in place, uh, unit system has, now that we have, every unit bond has a temperature check, cash. So, they have supply, Jerry had, where he can get the road, uh, form or whatever, he's gone, that, they do have it, where they can check temperature every morning.
Okay, and, and that needs to be, uh, enforced, because half of us on purpose are not used to it, and going up to it.
Everybody's champion.
Yeah, right, so, so, and you know, it's time to delegate a little responsibility. Uh, certainly, they have a temperature check, everybody has the unit themselves, so, you know, so we need to provide that structure to say, uh, the road former take the proof. And then to put that back together. Well, I would hope Jerry would put that in place.
Where that wouldn't happen. Like I said, they eat your, eat, uh, bond that outside, give it to the road former, they would do their man there by dating, and we get sort of lost it. And everywhere you have so many like.
Tell me this, are men working the day in the unit?
No.
They're not working, that's not the working in that company. Well. I would have to recommend that they go back to work, should have them all.
Yeah.
I mean, but I, I'd like them saying, you know, that, that, we got a procedure, Jerry, you know the procedure. You know, and I think you lived in the government long enough to understand, when I called, somebody called, we talking about one particular problem. You know, if you talking about a problem gonna affect the whole unit system, you need to make sure, if people, if the board there is following, before you hit it.
I got it.
Well, I don't know if you were spoken to, you know, uh, who had somebody to pass, who never coming back. Now, if somebody in this room would have expired, how soon would you, you ready to run into it, to be part of work? Reggie, we got a, we got a job, the unit system has a job, the city has a job, the deputy catch. God forbid, whether the deputy catch, something happens to the deputy, we gonna shut the chair department down, you can't shut department down.
When this thing first came out, we were all here, and you were on the phone.
That's right. But I, I, I'm just saying. Well, it got nothing to do with, get ready.
I actually will, we ain't coming out of it.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, that's, that's the thing, I've heard that now, I mean, we got a quit, we're an essential gift, the unit system is an essential part of government. We gotta, we gotta continue to work, but we gotta protect our people. And you can do both of them at the same time, but like I said, chair, if one of them will finally get the coronavirus, they're not gonna sit there back home, they got to be aware. But you gotta do some check, and that's what we gotta use common sense in the future. So, I guess, we can ha- ask, as I talked to the simple thing, are we comfortable with what we got in place, and the procedure gonna be in the future?
Well, I, I feel like, you know, that Mr. Smith, the manager of the unit system, he made a call, you know, I still back him on whatever call he made, so. If that was his call, I still back him, I, I don't fault him for it, cause we gave him, you start to run the unit system, and make the decision that best action of the unit system. So if he did make that call, or whoever made that call, I, you know, I don't, I don't have no problem. But I don't ever wanna, let it make him think that he's gonna come to this board or whatever decision he make, or sometimes he gonna make bad decision. That was about to live with, sometimes I'll make a bad decision, you gotta live with it, and then go with the territory, somebody's gonna make a bad decision, okay, now I'm gonna take it. I, I, and, and, and thank you, you have made something.
I made a lot of bad decisions in my life, but it wasn't based on something that I can have authority to make the decision on, that's what I'm trying to get at. The decision, the bad decision should have been made by the board supervisor, and in the future, that's where it needs to be. And if not, then y'all need to make sure that's clear, cause like I'm saying, I was elected to represent the people, not just this one, but I was a people of the county. And I think the decision to do to close a department, like courthouse, we all came together, and we made our decision, we did not agree on court debates. That's how it needs to be, board needs to make it, and I'm not faulting Mr. Smith, but I'm just saying in the future. We got a procedure in place, and if we don't leave here with the right procedure, then we got a problem.
Well, I just wanna say, we keep talking about a bad decision, I think it was a good decision.
Okay, you had something to do with me.
What? I couldn't fault you like you were talking.
Right.
I listen to you now, but Jerry, that was a good decision, if it come up again, don't be afraid to make a call, that's why I'm asking you.
That's what I'm telling, that's the problem that we got. We got a board member telling them to supersede the votes.
I didn't say supersede the votes. Hey, please, please, don't y'all, listen, board, this is what we, this county really say, this is what we say. He said, gotta watch you back, now, but everything that we do is gonna be scrutinized, what you, everything you. So just, hey, everybody, be good, hey, do your best thing, cause if you don't, we gonna get in the face of every decision we make, it's gonna be a bad decision. We don't ever do that right, and call to some of the people out here, but we do. We gonna get scrutinized, get ready.
Mr. President, I wanna say this.
Yes.
I don't want us as a board to get hung up on procedures when there are lives at stake, the truth. Doing the right thing is making sure our employees are safe, not any and all. If I got to, whatever, but we talking about people. People in this community, that we work here today, see here today, their families. You wanna talk to me about the season, I'm talking about keeping people safe, my food.
Your board, anything else coming for his board?
One more question, that's all we, we count on the season, we got, we have our procedure in place, wait. It's a procedure the way it's supposed to be, I mean, you saying we gonna be scrutinized, I'm not scrutinized.
I think it's working for him. But Mr. Hammond is out there, he's out there with me. He stays with those things, so I, I think he's wanting to do it before he can, he's kind of doing very, I think, the season.
No, I'm voting.
Yeah, I think they.
Something like this, I mean, you're armed up, I don't worry, I mean, I mean, on getting shut down, I don't think possible, we need to go back. That's the road.
Go back to anything else coming for his board?
Yes, one more thing, are we, we making sure that they have just one entrance to the courthouse?
Yes, sir. Just only access the side entrance, we, we not even having employees to use that, everybody coming, everybody here, yes, right one way in and out.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, several are good people, places, everybody, every person, every day, that's something that back go down, the airport be coming on the side, uh, for the last board meeting, you, the basketball. Uh, ask that everybody come into the exit with heavy enforcement, and no exception.
Yeah, I appreciate this, yeah. Let me say one more thing, I'm glad you brought that up, I had someone that contacted me as far as, they did not, they were unaware that this entrance now here was closed. So they called us in that they had to get out the evil group, and walk up those stairs, and go back down, knowing that it was closed. So I guess it may be a sign of somebody that got out there to roll, to let them know that this entrance is closed, and they can drive on.
I suppose it's included, but especially we put a sign to show our area to enter the entry and back, yes, sir.
Good hour, thank you for the venue, attend to, recognize, give Mr. Moley revolution, you know, here we say, to, I like that, really, say.
I make that motion.
To the committee, all the, all the papers, all the, I have that vote again, now they make a motion to. Michelle, what you say for a revolution, for what, Randy Ball?
Yes, sir.
I certainly am.
There's a rule we call, say, yes, boy, all the way, close, I have that vote again. You guys, I got a couple of the two.
Nope.
If not, I gotta turn the motion to be said. The little bit of, say, yes, boy, all the way, I, I, close, I have that vote again.